Okay, good. I wanted to...
Okay.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the, our business meeting. We'll call to order the June 16th, 2016 business meeting. Mr. Krupp.
Yes, well, good evening, Commissioners, and what a beautiful summer evening it is. So, we are joined here from County Council, Mr. Chris Story here, representing the office, and then to my left, Mary Rathke, serving as the Clerk of the Board. So, I'll start with a roll. Commissioner Bernard, Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
And Chair Smith.
Thank you. I am here.
And I should make mention that Chair Ludlow is out of the office today, so Commissioner Trudy Smith is serving as the Chair this evening.
Thank you. Let's all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to citizens' communication, I want to take a moment to say that the mass murder of innocent people this past weekend in Orlando has been felt profoundly across our nation. We in Clackamas County in Oregon particularly have experienced the pain of such tragedy resulting from mass shootings at the Clackamas Town Center and at the Umquah Community College in Roseburg. Let's please observe a moment of silence for the victims, their loved ones and friends, for all of us affected by these tragedies. Thank you very much. We will get into our citizen communication, and the first person on the list is Jerry Myra and Mac Woods. You can come up at two at a time, please.
Okay, I'll take that.
Mr. Myra, go ahead and take a seat, and you can talk into our microphone. And if you would like, scoot up nice and close, and please state your name.
My name is Jerry Myra, and I went to the Commission out there to mow all last night, and I got so upset that I had to come here today. So, really, I just got a little statement. I have a... I don't have the credentials of Dr. Evans, who I thought would be here tonight, but I have lived on Leyland Road for over forty-five years, raising my family up there, my kids. And my granddaughter was hoping to raise her, my great-grandkids there, but after this marijuana went in, they decided they don't want to be out there. But listening to all the testimony last night, I think Clackamas County Commissioners have failed the county residents miserably by opting out of allowing grow operations to go ahead rather than thinking out a plan with all the facts and how to handle the grows. I can't help to think money has driven most of the, some of the action that the Commissioners have taken to allow the grow right in the middle of residential areas with only a ten-foot from the property line, not considering the noise, the odor, and the security around the house. Now, they're going to have two buildings, sixty by one oh eight for processing, they say, but they say that's illegal out there in a, where, in a farming area. They have twelve large fans. They have heat pumps that put out seventy-six decibels. And they're supposed to have storage tanks for rainwater. And then they put an eight-foot fence on, and to me, this is just, just a criminal act, really. And the Commissioners, last night, they were stating they were worried about the lawsuits. They have to go on with everything. But, God, I wish they had considered the lawsuit that maybe we can get going with all the fumes and chemicals that are going to come off this pot grow. And, but last night, I was, I was just upset all night, and then I go home and I read this pamphlet here. And reading the pamphlet last night, it just set me off the way the Assistant Chair, Trudy Smith, responded to testimony that Dr. Ken Evans gave. Her attitude and her comments were disrespectful. It is how you, is this how you build your public trust? And then, in reading it, they were talking about the growing, growing a vibrant economy. It looks like they figured that marijuana is a product they're going to use to grow the economy in Clackamas County. And they talk about all the, all the jobs they're going to create. They're going to, they're going to get ten thousand new jobs by 2019 and fifty millions in new, new capital asset investments. I wonder if the marijuana industry is part of this money? But, and a public safety, they, they talk about in here. I think that's a joke when you look at the crime rate around the drug-related substance like marijuana and a hundred and forty new legal operations in Clackamas County. Just look at Portland, what happened there. But, and another thing I was really disappointed in is Martha Schrader. When they first voted on this, whether to opt out, it was a vote of two to three. But then she changed her vote to make it a four to one, leaving Paul Savis out on left field. And she stated that she changed her vote to go along with the rest of the Commissioners. And that, to me, was just a, if she was up to election, for election, that would be a no vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myra. Mr. Krupp, there's a couple of statements made. I can handle one of them. Performance Clackamas with the goals that you cite was actually implemented long before marijuana had even been talked about in this county. So, that, I just wanted to correct you on that. And secondly, regarding the property on Leyland Road that he refers to, he brought a map, he talked about citing in a residential area noise and fencing. Can you talk about that?
Well, I, after last night's meeting, and I understand most of the people who came to last night's meeting were primarily there because they were concerned specifically about the property on Leyland Road. I was able to follow up, because one of the commitments we made was that we would schedule an opportunity for those who attended to meet with county staff to review the application and the county codes as they relate to the application. And so, I did communicate that with Barbara Cartmill, the Director of the Department, and Mike McAllister just this morning, and they are working on putting something together to invite folks here to the county offices to sit down and go through those details with, with the folks that have those concerns. I did, in doing so, I did get a chance to take a look at the, the actual permit action for this particular property, and what it involved is a Type One permit, which is a ministerial permit. And what I mean by ministerial is that if, if it complies with the codes, it must issue. In other words, there's not a discretionary opportunity to turn it down. It simply, does this meet the standards that are currently in the county code? This involves a, a four-acre parcel of land that is situated in the exclusive farm use district of the county. And there's a, when we get a chance to meet with the residents from the area, we can go through some of the specific standards that are laid out in the permit, which I think will be helpful. I did want to make clear that there's a very clear statement in the application that there is no processing proposed or planned with this application. It's, it involves strictly growing on, on the property. And there are inside the, inside the permit application requirements related to lighting, control of odors and filtration, including the use of an activated carbon filtration system and negative air exchange with the building, conditions related to noise to make sure that the noise levels at the property line are no more than fifty decibels at the property line, and standards related to waste management and those sorts of things. I think it'll be helpful to sit down with folks to go through this with them. It may not assuage all of their concerns, but I think it'd be helpful in the, in the environment of having our technical experts present to be able to go through this in some detail with, with folks. And I'm very happy to have that happen and work on that in short order. I will say this, if we do have additional questions about the county's ordinances as they pertain to marijuana use, we do have Jennifer Hughes from our Planning Department in the audience as well, and she can field some of these questions, technical questions, maybe a lot better than I can, but I will endeavor to do my best as they come up.
Just another point of clarification, and then our Commissioners have some comments. Mr. Myra, you said this was a residential area, but from what I understand from Mr. Krupp's statement, this is actually EFU Farm.
Well, it's like a residential area when you get down to one and two-acre plots.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a clarification for the record. I was a yes vote on opting out. I thought, my concern was that this was an urban-rural divide issue, and the urban folks didn't quite know or understand what the impact would be on their rural neighbors and the rural folk out there. So, that was a vote, yes, I took as a, as, you know, okay. I thought we should. It didn't happen that way. I was in the minority, and that happens. Commissioners, we aren't always on the same page with things, and that's fine with me. What I voted yes on was basically when we, it looked as if, well, when there was not going to be an opt-out vote, then we worked to construct an ordinance. So, a lot of the issues, sir, that you're talking about, that we had an option to try and regulate them as tightly as possible. So, it was yes on opting out, but I did, I was also yes. Once we didn't get the opt-out, I decided that it was going to be prudent for us to regulate these grows as much as possible. And I'm glad people are still addressing this, because we may find out as we move through this that there are even additional regulations and things that we may have to work on because of the impacts on rural communities. So, just for clarification. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard.
Actually, I have a question for Jennifer.
Jennifer Hughes, can you come up, please? Thank you. And please introduce yourself.
Yes, good evening. My name's Jennifer Hughes, and I'm a Principal Planner with the Planning and Zoning Division.
And so, my question is, EFU is an outright use, correct?
Right.
Which the Legislature changed.
Yes, the House Bill 3400 that was passed in the 2015 session did define marijuana production as a farm use and require us to permit it in our exclusive farm use districts.
Yeah, so, it was actually the Legislature that changed the rules on us and made facilities like this an outright use, meaning we could forbid them, but we would, but we could regulate them, right?
That's correct.
Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I just, Mr. Krupp, last night, the question came up I hadn't heard before, and that was about the wastewater or discharge water. Did you find anything out about that?
I'm not aware of anything. This is a farm use, so the handling of water on-site would be dealt with, as would any other farm. That would be how it would be handled. There's the requirements in the permit application relative to waste receptacles and that sort of thing, but that's what's addressed in the permit.
I've been on the road all day, and I just got back from Hood River. I didn't have a chance to review some of the comments, and I wanted to go back through the OLCC rules to see what they said about discharge of waste, the plant material, and so on. I recall it being in there, but I have not had a chance to review it. So, Jennifer, my question to you then is, the concern I heard last night, let me just back up. The concern I heard last night from some of these folks that spoke was about, worried about their wells being contaminated or any other material or product in water form being coming, you know, being traveling on their property or into their wells. Is what, is there any regulation that you're aware of or any kind of controls or measures that can address that?
So, I'm not aware of anything at the county, well, I'm not aware of anything. I can tell you that at the county level, there's nothing. Our standard related to waste was really, it just mimics the OLCC standard, and it's more about keeping the marijuana waste secure in some way. And I think it was intended not really as an environmental issue, but more for this question of, you know, this being a drug and perhaps being, you know, misappropriated in some way. It's more from a security standpoint. As I understood it, and I wasn't there last night, this was more a question of groundwater and runoff and infiltrating into wells and that kind of thing. And I haven't seen anything, I haven't read the OLCC rules either recently, but I don't recall that there was anything with regard to that. I do know that this particular use is proposing rainwater catchment. They're not using groundwater. They're using rainwater catchment, and they're using, they're recapturing from their air conditioning and dehumidifiers, and they're just going to store that in tanks and then use that for their irrigation. But what happens to, and it's all indoor. So, what happens to any wastewater at that point? It's not clear from what I've seen in the file.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up for you, Jennifer. Now, we're going to be reviewing some of these regulations for marijuana later in the year, correct?
It is on our work program sometime for this fiscal year that starts July 1st, yes.
And it'll probably be fall, I'm thinking.
I, to my knowledge, it's not scheduled yet, but...
Okay, well, I think, as I said last night, if anybody has any concerns about the regulations, please email us with your concern, and we can work on that and try to put something in there that is hopefully satisfactory to you. I cannot promise anything, but, and something that I said last night, and I'll say it again today, and I said early on when we were going through this, that this is a work in progress, that we would be revisiting this issue. And if we ran across something that wasn't working, then we could change it. And I think, from this Commission, from any public body, to acknowledge that in the beginning, in the middle, and in the end, I think we have really gone overboard to try to keep as many people as happy as possible. Mr. Woods.
Thank you. Acting Chair Trudy Smith, my county Commissioners, as well as all the voters out here in the county, Clackamas County, and the state voters. I want to compliment the people that do the video for the good job they do. And you can pick up those little discs, which I have a file cabinet full of, that talks about what you Commissioners have said over the years since I've been coming here. So, my name is MacArthur Woods. I go for Mac for short. I live in rural Camby. I am a veteran after serving over twenty continuous years of active duty, starting with boot camp in 1960 where we learned about the UCMJ. That's Uniform Code of Military Justice, which is the rules of law for the military. One of those many things I still remember was walk my post in a military manner, observing all things that take place with insider hearing. That was one of the rules of law, and if you did not obey, you could go to the brig. In Oregon, we have the Attorney General who's supposed to enforce the rules of the laws in Oregon. So, what has gone wrong in Oregon today? And I'm not taking, talking about the train crash at Moser last week. I'm talking about the money crash in Oregon. The taxpayers all pay highly, and we're, what you was talking about last night was about money, having the money to deal with this crazy stuff. Did you know that you don't know what you don't know? Okay, going on here. Some politicians ignore the rules of the law in Oregon, and they should be charged with fraud and held accountable by the ORS statutes that they're supposed to live by. Why can't they do it? We need to get an attorney-in-general in there seated, like David Crowe, Daniel Crowe, that's running for Attorney General, to clean out the crazy stuff. How many million dollars was wasted by the governor before he resigned? And how much waste, it was wasted on the CRC? I'm talking about our money, our taxes. It's millions. It ain't a few dollars. We don't even know how much has been wasted on light rail at this time, and all the many mostly empty Tri-Med buses running wild all over the Portland metropolitan area. Open your eyes, folks. Look around. What's wrong with Oregon? My question for you today is, why do we have so many homeless veterans in Oregon today? More specifically, our veterans, like one right here in the crowd tonight, rated forty percent or more disabled. Some veterans are missing arms and legs, who are unable to work a normal job, and some in wheelchairs. They're homeless because they can't pay their cotton picking taxes. That's a byword from where I come from. The answer is simply, they can't pay the high taxes on their homes, and they lose their homes, become a homeless veteran. While politicians play the sympathy card, talk about how they help veterans, only to get more votes from their bleeding hearts, as we have heard over and over and over again by politicians. Just once again, think about the Navy SEAL Tyrone Woods, Oregon City graduate, right here from Oregon City High School in 1992, and could not live on his retirement pay after over twenty years in the Navy. He's a Navy SEAL, so he took that job to protect Ambassador Stevens. Can you politicians compare your annual pay with the pay of our military persons, people retired after over twenty years, like myself? And they were the ones that give us the freedom that we have in our country. But how come you can't back them and get them down, particularly the disabled veterans, to get rid of that crazy stuff? Get your act together. I asked a question last night. The famous quote for Forrest Gump, and no one of you three could answer it, as you recall. Can you answer it today? Tell us, Trudy, what it is? But Ambassador Stevens and those four, the four of them, three military men, was all killed, even though they called for help, and the President refused to even send a plane over to protect them. So, political talk is cheap. Helping vets is worth exactly what most politicians deserve, and that's nothing. Can you answer my question for, Trudy, for Forrest Gump's famous quote?
I believe I answered it last night.
No, you didn't. None of you did. I had to tell you what it was. Did you forget already?
Actually, I answered it. You weren't listening.
You want to, well, maybe, and I noticed Martha also, wouldn't even, she's afraid of the mic. You can't hear, particularly us veterans.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And you know, regarding the property tax issue that you raised for a disabled veteran, and it is outdated. And unfortunately, here in Clackamas County, any property tax adjustments need to go through the state Legislature.
I know all about it. I know more about it than you do. And let me tell you, it's the exact same for every one of the thirty-six counties in Oregon.
Yeah, can I finish, Mac?
Nineteen hundred dollars is all they get off the total assessed value.
Mac, I didn't interrupt you, please. So, let me finish the question, not so much for your benefit.
Thank you. I'll hush you, and I want to answer your comment.
Not so much your benefit, but the people in the room who've maybe not heard this before, the people listening. And it's the Oregon State Legislature, and we have promised that we would take our request to the Legislature through Associated Oregon Counties, Association of Oregon Counties, and put that request into the Legislature, and we would support an additional tax break for, property tax break for disabled veterans. Thank you very much.
Why can't they get it back to what it was sixty years ago when it started? A veteran rated forty percent or more disabled did not pay one dime of property taxes. Thank you. You need to know that. Do something for the veterans. Have a good day. Thank you.
We have two more people. We have Deana Swanson and Jose Hernandez.
I am Deana Kronberg Swanson, the widow of Robert Kronberg. And I have, you should have copies of the papers that I have brought for your, to see what was used for the fill of the lake. You don't have it?
Les, did you not give them the copies of this?
Yeah, that's, they should have it. I brought you copies that was in the, and there was all, lots of, I've got a whole file full of the, covered in the newspapers. This is back in 1954, July, and he'll give you each one of you a copy of this. I understand that Mr. Bernard made a statement to the, to the Commission and to the people that that lake property was filled with garbage, or junk. It was a junk bed. Well, I think if you read this, you'll see that it's filled with gravel. Okay, this is my, what I wanted to clarify for you, to see. And I have many other clippings from the newspaper that my husband kept for this benefit, for people to see. And we spent a lot of money making sure that property and that we own the property to the middle of the lake. I have the deed for that, too. So, if anybody has a question.
I don't, but thank you for sharing that tonight. We appreciate it.
Yeah, and I didn't appreciate this being called a dump.
Okay, I don't know about that either, but thank you for coming.
It was made, and it was reported to me.
Okay. Jose Hernandez, welcome.
Thank you, and good evening. Once again, I'm here to talk about the same issue. The last time I was here, I recommended that perhaps you guys should form an organization that could address and help address the issue at the state level. Two weeks ago, The Oregonian carried an article from a mortgage representative in Lake Oswego, who, according to him, he was offering assistance to veterans to obtain mortgages. I was wondering if perhaps some of you guys could make contact with either the state, county, or whatever large-size representative of mortgages in the state of Oregon are available that could pursue this specific subject, since it would also help them gain more customers. But as a large organization, they might be able to influence the state. At least, that's my humble opinion. The company that was offering that, that service to veterans is in Lake Oswego. And that's all I'm here for, to recommend that instead of just sitting here and waiting for the state to, to address the issue, that we have more people doing what Mac and I are doing, is begging and begging and begging that we pursue this subject.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I'm not sure what company that is. But, Mr. Story, isn't there a mortgage program in Oregon for veterans?
I honestly can't say.
I think there is, and...
I will believe you.
Yeah, there is. I believe, I believe there is. I don't know how well-funded it is, but there's one that already exists. And maybe, I don't know, but maybe this person is just offering assistance to do the paperwork with an already existing veterans loan program. Yeah.
Madam Chair, Gary McCann, property owner in Clackamas County.
Yes. Yes, sir. Off the record. We can't, we can't hear you. Yeah, please come up. And what was your, can you state your name again, sir?
My name is Gary McAdams, Vietnam Veteran, thirty-three years of military service. The Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs is well-funded and has agents on five days a week from eight AM to five PM to assist United States veterans with property every day, seven days a week. There's no reason, Commission, Commissioners, there's no reason to go outside the Department of Veterans Affairs.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you bringing that information forward. It seemed to be quite knowledgeable. Next up on the list is Kendall Evans and Richard Langdon. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Schrader, go ahead.
Well, folks are coming up. I did look up the Veterans Loan Program, or that Home Loan Program. It is a product of the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs, and if you can Google that, you can find it. And they do, that's exactly what you were talking about. Yeah.
And then we do have, at my...
Sir, you need to talk at the microphone, and, yeah, at least, yeah.
As a president of all Veterans Military Outreach Organization, we have that piece of the puzzle at our site at seventy-six-hundred Southeast Johnson Creek Boulevard, from eight AM, Monday through, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And we have a person on staff that will help any veteran with that situation.
Thank you very much, Mr. McAdams. Either one can start. Please state your name.
Hi. I'm Dr. Kendall Evans, and I'm here regards to marijuana land use. I gave a presentation last night, and tonight's presentation will be very short and brief. I'll keep it under three minutes. In regards to that, my qualifications, I'm also a, have experience in the federal OSHA Industrial Hygienist, as the federal OSHA Industrial Hygienist, and Safety Inspector and Compliance Officer. And this is in regards to Clackamas County Regulations Marijuana Land Use Law, dated March first, two thousand and sixteen. I have found that the Clackamas County Commissioners and Land Use Staff arbitrarily and randomly fabricated regulations in complete disregard for current scientific, medical, environmental evidence, current or future federal and state laws, logical and reasonable reasoning. I will have questions later on. Focusing on eight forty oh-three K hazardous waste. I recently evaluated and approved marijuana grow and processing application that had no mention of hazardous waste management, other than the OLCC requiring the used marijuana plant be kept in a locked facility. How will the toxic materials and heavy metals, cadmium, arsenic, and lead, from the plant be neutralized and then disposed of? And we'll deal with this at the end. The two processes currently suggested will either place organic cadmium and other materials into the food chain by feeding the toxic waste to the livestock, or releasing more toxins into the air by incineration. These are defective processes with extreme environmental toxic health issues. Washington State is in the process of banning incineration of marijuana toxic solid waste. Spokane Clean Air Agency has now banned incineration of marijuana waste. Today, I have been in contact with the Chief Marijuana Compliance Officer of DEQ, OHA, and OLCC. And the consensus is that there's inadequate empirical data available to scientifically formulate regulations on toxic solid waste marijuana management, and that it is reasonable and prudent for the county to opt out, as stipulated in ORS four-seven-five B eight-hundred, or declare moratorium on all growing and processing facilities being built and growing and processing facilities, applications in process for one year, in order for safety and health standards for citizens, livestock, agricultural products, and marijuana facilities be correctly established for Clackamas County by the appropriate state agencies. A moratorium start work order must be immediately placed on all current marijuana grow and processing facilities in progress, and all applications in progress until the appropriate environmental questions, answers, and applicable standards are satisfied in regards to health of workers, neighbors, environment, and personal enjoyment of private property. To not do so will make Clackamas County and Clackamas County Commissioners not only liable civilly, but criminally for the citizens, livestock, and agricultural products that will be exposed to polycyclic organic carbons, carcinogens, heavy metals, and other toxins from marijuana growing and processing waste management. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Story, I have a couple of questions, and maybe you can comment generally on his testimony. He mentioned criminal liability to us Commissioners. Can you address that, since you're a lawyer?
Commissioners, I'm unaware of any statute that would impose criminal liability on you for allowing the current state of Oregon law to continue forward.
Well, there you go. Jennifer, he made an accusation that we are fabricating regulations. Can you address that generally?
I don't believe we fabricated regulations. We were authorized by the state law regarding marijuana. Well, first, of course, marijuana was passed by the voters, legalized by the voters. Secondly, then, the state legislature authorized us to adopt reasonable regulations for time, place, and manner for these uses, and we did so.
Okay. Mr. Savas, you have a comment?
Just a question. You, do you recall who you talked to today?
Pardon?
You mentioned you spoke to someone today at the state?
Yes.
Do you recall who that was? Or who they were?
Yes, I do. OLCC, it was a Mr. Blessing. At OHA, it was, I do have their names written down. I'd be happy to give them afterwards.
Okay, maybe I'll, yeah.
Yeah, would you give them to our, our staff right here?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Langdon, you're up.
Thank you, Tootie.
You bet. It's nice seeing you.
You as well. You have always that smiley face. That's good.
Thanks.
In spite, in considering what you have to put up with a lot of times. Good job. Richard Langdon, Portland, Oregon. You know, I, I've come here to talk about Jim Bernard and his behavior the other night, that I witnessed on the video. There's one thing that, the lady that spoke earlier tonight, she, she talked about the park being filled with garbage as, I remember that. I can't remember the exact quote from Jim Bernard, but, you know, it was an aggressive statement he made. And he also made an aggressive statement about it being condemned, not given, not, not. And I, I don't know that that's true, is it? Was that property condemned, or did you give it as a gift?
Never, never, never.
I never said it was condemned.
From the time we bought it.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make a clarity, because I'm sure, Jim Bernard's lying right now. I'm sure that he, or he just doesn't understand it.
I understand, but it's the time we go.
Yeah, and he has a smirk on, and I hope the camera picks up Jim Bernard right now with a smirk on his face. And I want everybody to go back and see if he used the word condemned. Please. Everyone. All right, I'll go on about mine.
Thank you.
I just wanted, I wanted to get that clear, too. I did witness, as you know, I went to, I heard about what happened and how Jim Bernard aggressively attacked my friend Les Poole about three, four weeks ago, right here after Les Poole had left, of course. This is what bullies do. The, the, and bear with me here, I'm not going to say anything that's not true, that I saw is not true, and an opinion that's a reasonable opinion by a reasonable person, Richard Langdon. I witnessed this aggressive attack, absolutely aggressive attack, with allegations that had no basis in any fact. It was shocking. It was unbelievable. I want, again, the cameras to pick up the smirk on Jim Bernard's face. That's typically what he does when somebody challenges his behavior. I agree. Thank you. What, this behavior of Jim Bernard is typical of him. It's, he has a propensity for it. This is just what he does. Does it time and time and time again. This is really bad for the county. Bad for our government. Perhaps over time, as he gets older and grows up, this behavior will fade. I don't know. What we witnessed was abuse of power. That's what we witnessed that day. It's disgusting. And it's very scary for our government, again, with Jim Bernard, with the smirk on his face. Please, cameraman, pick it up. And he doesn't even realize he shouldn't be having that smirk on his face. Check that out. I also saw it that, that, on that video, I have, I, I can do this on, I can put in another card and continue with this, or we can do it right now? Would you let me?
Richard, go ahead and continue.
Thank you.
Say what you need to say.
I saw the, some of the Commissioners did actually comment about that bizarre behavior by Mr. Bernard, and that was good. That was good. And this is probably the point for me to also say, and I wish, I wish that John was here, because I want to, again, thank him for apologizing for Mr. Bernard's behavior on behalf of Clackamas County, for Bernard throwing me out and not allowing me to use my three minutes. And that was awfully nice of John. I appreciate it. He did it twice. It was great. So did Paul Savas, and I appreciate that, Paul. Thank you. Bernard still hasn't apologized. In fact, just, just absolutely sits there and says, no, it was warranted. Disgusting for a politician to be like that, a servant, and gets paid to do this to citizens. Citizens must speak out against this type of behavior. It's, and so do the board members and the staff that witness it. What happens if we don't speak out about this stuff, about these angry outbursts that Jim Bernard continues to have? And they go on and on, as long as he's in office, I don't see it stopping. When we don't speak out about this sort of thing, we simply continue to expand the, the level of tyranny in this country that exists already. Tyranny does exist in this country, and this is one of the reasons why it continues to exist. When you attempt to silence people with intimidation, making them afraid to come here and get involved in our government, and that's what we seriously need more than anything else in this country today. Us citizens need to get, first of all, we need to vote, as we all know. I don't care who you vote for, you need to show up and vote. We don't do it. But then when we're intimidated and made to feel afraid to come here in fear of retaliation, that's tyranny.
Are you afraid of being retaliated against tonight? Because I would sincerely hope you wouldn't be, because I'm allowing you to, to speak freely.
Thank you.
And I've allowed many people tonight to speak freely over their time limit. Only one lady didn't use her time, and she made her point, so maybe if you want to wrap it up.
I'm not done yet, but, and please allow me some more time on that. And, Tootie, I don't feel afraid of you. I don't feel afraid of Martha. I don't feel afraid of Paul. I really do feel afraid of Jim Bernard, and not because of what he can say to me. It's, punks say everything, you know? Bullies say whatever, and who cares? It doesn't matter. What I'm afraid of is the bizarre things, I don't think he's, well, I think that he has anger management issues that need to be taken care of. I really do. I'm serious. I'm not joking. He needs to stop the anger, angry outbursts to these people and attack them over and over and over again. Let me see if I can, I'm almost done, Tootie. Thank you for your time. I've already said it, but I'll say it one more time on this one part, and I want to talk about Les a little bit. And that is that there's a health insurance policy here with Clackamas County, and that health insurance policy probably includes different types of counseling, including anger, anger issues and management. I would encourage the board, the staff, everyone here, and any citizen that wants to come talk about it, encourage Jim Bernard to go get some help, because this is not normal for a citizen, for a Commissioner to do this. Once again, I hope the camera gets the smirk on Jim Bernard's face. He doesn't get it. It's unbelievable. He still doesn't get it.
Okay.
Now, Les Poole, Les Poole, excuse me, I'm just about done. Les Poole, he's a hero to many of us here. He really is. And thank you for the nod, Tootie, and you know it, and I know it, and everyone here knows it. He shows up every week. You know, and I don't agree with everything that Les says, and I don't, or his, or his methods, but he comes here to talk about taxes, he comes here to talk about land use, he talks, comes here to talk about corruption in government and the likes of Jim Bernard. You know, he's the sort of person that ought to be honored, and we need to encourage people like Les Poole to show up here and be an example of other people to come here and be part of our government. We need it desperately in our country today. I think I'm done. Thank you, Tootie.
Thank you, Mr. Langdon, for coming tonight. Tina Kennedy has agreed to talk tonight. We're going to allow her ten minutes, because she's representing about fifteen different veterans who each wanted to speak, and they're three minutes. But Ms. Kennedy, please, please come up. Does Mr. Edgar want to join you? That's fine. And so she's going to be allowed more time than the normal three minutes, because she is representing a group of people. And thank you for coming tonight.
And that group of people, they're all sitting right over there.
Yep. Hi, folks. I recognize some of you. Great. So go ahead and state your name and speak right into the microphone.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners and Chair Smith. You all know me. My name is Tina Kennedy. I am actually a U.S. Army Retired First Sergeant. I was in the Army for twenty-two years. I'm actually from this area. I went to Milwaukee High School, and so I am back in my hometown after retirement. I first want to start off on a positive note and say that hopefully we can encourage some of the things, there's been a lot to talk about veterans, and I'm hopefully going to give you some positive news that'll be pleasant to help lift the spirits. So if you notice, I put this, I do have Paul Edgar here with me. I'm representing my nonprofit, which is Fort Kennedy, and Paul Edgar is on my Board of, my Board of Directors, as well as J.R. Knotts, which you guys know him, he couldn't make it this evening. He used to be on your VAC committee. He used to be a member of your VAC. And James Elsted is also here as my board member. I want to start out with just giving you a quick rundown. I have brought with me tonight, I've brought the President of All Military Veterans Outreach Organization, Gary McAdams, who is also the President of the Vietnam Veterans of America, Post Three-Ninety-Two. For two years, I've been working with the county part-time, as you know, as the Homeless Veterans Coordination Team. And that was twenty hours of my week. And the other twenty hours of my week, since I had forty, I decided to start a nonprofit. I was working with the homeless veterans. There are quite a few homeless veterans in Clackamas County. First off, I want to, I want to congratulate, the county has done great things, and we have three or four great programs in the county. The one piece that I think is missing is what I focused on. I'm trying to make all the programs that we have work together. My dream was to get all the nonprofits together and have all the nonprofits start working towards a common goal. So we have opened the first Veterans Outreach Center in the whole entire Portland metro area, and we have over ten nonprofits that are all co-located. I gave you a list. If you look at your first sheet, that is a list of all the nonprofits that have partnered with us. We are all located at seventy-six-hundred Johnson Creek Boulevard. And we did acquire this building in March, the generous donation of Crosspoint Northwest, the largest auto auction in all of Oregon. He has given us the building on a six-year lease, free of charge.
That's nice.
So, yes, so congratulations to him.
And you're going to have the time that you need. I'm just making sure that the umbrella organization is called Fort Kennedy.
The umbrella organization is called All Military Veterans Outreach Organization.
I see. Okay, and within that, are these other ones listed?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead and continue.
Okay. Underneath that organization are all these different nonprofits, and this is just the start. Now, mind you, we acquired this building in March, and we have been in this building for two and a half months. We have moved all these nonprofits in. We don't mess around. If you notice, that Gary McAdams and myself are both First Sergeants. I know you've worked with me on the job, and I like to get things done. The reason why this came up and why it's been brought up so abruptly, and I'm, I'm here kind of on behalf of Paul, because I did bring, I worked for the county for two years. I did put in my two-week notice when I received notice that I would be funded completely for my tiny homes project. So I put in my two-weeks notice, and my last week at the county was two weeks ago. I've worked very hard to keep both separate, my county job and my nonprofit, to make sure that there was no overlap or there was no confusion. But when I got completely funded for my project, I felt it was time to step out of my county role and step into it as a nonprofit. If you look at all the different people that we're working with there at the AMVU, what we decided when we all got together, the first project we're going to tackle is homeless veterans. And that was our first main focus, which is what Fort Kennedy's focus has been all along. We have a huge fundraiser coming up, July fifteenth. Crosspoint Northwest is going to have the whole entire project funded. If you run, if you run through the pages that I gave you, the second... If you run, if you run through the pages that I gave you, the second page I put in here was the National Coalition of Homelessness across the federal government, and what they have said we should be doing for our veterans. I work in social services, and I've been working, I actually am a member of the Continuum of Care, and I'm also on the steering committee for the Continuum of Care, and I've talked to social services, and I will be staying in those positions as my nonprofit. So I have transferred over as a county employee, but now will be a nonprofit member, I'm working with the veterans still. If you look at number two in the criteria and benchmarks that came out two years ago, that we should be, the community should provide a shelter immediate for any veteran experiencing homelessness, and I believe that is one area that this county has not fulfilled its duty to our homeless veterans. We do work right now with Portland, they do have a shelter up in the city of Portland, but what I wanted to add and what I wanted to make very clear is that the people that I work with are actually Clackamas County citizens, the people in the room, not to give out any names, but I have three homeless vets that are here now, one of the homeless vets I went to high school with, they went to Milwaukee High School, she is now living in her vehicle. Now, I have told her that she has options to move up to Portland, but it is not the option that these veterans would want, they are from this area, they are actually homegrown Clackamas County citizens. I have another couple here that had to move up to this area, to Clackamas County, they were working with their HUD-VASH voucher, they are living in their vehicle now, they contacted us two months ago, and when they got here, they contacted both housing authorities from Eugene to here to try and get things worked out, and because of paperwork, they are now living in their vehicle, okay, and I have had, they've been to our center during the day, and we are feeding them, we do have food available at the center, and we do have daytime air conditioning, but I do not have any shelters for these people in the evenings, and there's no way to shelter these people, so that's the one piece I believe we're missing. If you go to the next page, we have been addressing this issue with Mike McAllister and we have gone, and Chip Robbins, Paul Edgar here has been on my board for two years, and he has been doing all the research and working with the different planners and such. If, and I'll give you time to read all this, I know I didn't have a chance to get it to you before, but we have found a piece of property that is zoned correctly, it is zoned FU10, which permits campgrounds, we are looking at a tiny home concept, which is 200 square feet or below, the tiny homes are not considered, we don't have to go in and get, use SDC fees to build these, which is what, $32,000 per building, because they are under 200 square feet, and they are not considered a livable domain. Right now, tiny homes is the big thing across America, I know everybody has looked into it, I know that we've talked about it over and over again for two years, and we've even talked about it on the Continuum of Care. What I had proposed, and what I had brought up to Commissioner Savas and Commissioner Schrader in the beginning, because she had to leave early, but what we had proposed is that we found a piece of property that is zoned correctly, it is out in the middle of the Canema Bowl, it is in the urban growth boundary, it is also, it's two and a half acres, it is, we don't have to worry about the NIMBY factor, which is the not in my backyard, because there are no neighbors out there, and it is the perfect place for us to put our 20 tiny homes. We have been looking at all the different regulations, and we're trying to figure out how to acquire this property, if we can acquire the property, all of us nonprofits together can have, we have the funding to build these tiny homes and have a shelter up and running by November. We were pushing for that date so we could have the homeless veterans in shelter before the winter hits. There's three different options in the packet, if you notice, I have given you the most expensive option, if we pay for everything, out of pocket, it's $170,000 for us to build all 120 tiny homes.
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty tiny homes. Yes, ma'am. Now, Mr. Bernard, I did notice in one of the meetings that you had mentioned with a nonprofit bringing in funds and matching the funds that the county gives out to a nonprofit, and I know it came up in the budget meeting, that you guys were looking at dedicating $300,000 to some kind of a veteran shelter, and I was watching what happened after that, and I was saying that this is a nonprofit, we're coming forward with our nonprofit with $175,000 to not 100% match, but to partially match what the county could do to help us. The biggest problem right now is we have the funds, we just don't have a piece of property, and everybody knows that that is like gold. The big thing and the big problem that people have brought up is that it is in a floodplain area, we have looked at the overlays, we've done all the research, and we've researched, a lot of tiny homes are going up in Florida and in Louisiana in floodplain areas, because you cannot build officially on there, there is a $200 way we can amend the homes so they float. They do it in all the floodplain areas in Louisiana and in, we've done all the research, so there's a way to modify the tiny home, and for $200, each home would be able to float, if in chance there was a flood, we'd be able to float away, or tiny homes are very easily accessible, and a giant crane can come in and pick them up and put them on a, on a truck and take them out. So, we did bring you the, the codes, that comes down to RU10, what that stipulates and how it does stipulate, we could have a campground, and I know that it was also brought up that you guys wanted to mimic what Lane County is doing, and what they're doing down in Lane County, and I have done some research on Lane County, we've, the only piece, we have almost the exact same pieces of this puzzle put together, minus the housing authority and minus our social services, which I am working with right now, we are trying to make a, some kind of a connection and a bond, so we can all work together on this process. Our plan is with Fort Kennedy, once we get these veterans in the tiny homes and shelter them for six months or less, we will have a centralized bathroom, shower facility, we have the funds to remodel the house there, we would be able to work with the HUD-VASH program, SSVF, the whole entire homeless veterans coordination team, and we would be able to get these veterans in one spot so they can be housed faster through all the programs we have.
Thank you, Tina Kennedy. Paul, I know that you, I was told you weren't going to talk, but I cannot, can't imagine you not saying anything.
Commissioner Smith, could I, I have my light on, could I address?
Yes, you may comment.
Thank you. Tina, I want to thank you for your energy and your commitment and your passion about this, and I just want to just clarify for everyone, so there's no misunderstanding, and thank you for your service and all the other veterans that are in this room, I mean that sincerely. But, so you and I had talked in, in May, early May, and you had mentioned on the phone that you wanted to set up a meeting, which we, it'll be set up for June 3rd, in which myself and Commissioner Schrader met with you, and at that time, you indicated to me that you were going to put in your notice, or put your notice in to quit your job, so I just wanted to clarify everything I heard today, so I don't have any misunderstandings. So, as I understood, when you say fully funded, and you shared with me and Martha that day, that you had the funding for the facility?
And for the tiny homes.
Tiny homes, and you're fully funded from that aspect, but you're not funded from property aspect, right?
Yes, sir, exactly.
You are looking for a property, Paul, yourself have mentioned that particular property down on, off of 99E, and Paul, you and I have talked about perhaps another, some other options, so I just wanted to clarify that that's, that's what it was, and it was my hope that you would be able to submit a very competitive proposal, ready to go, if there was some funding available, or a grant, or whatever it may be, and so hopefully, we can do something, and, and if all those things are, as you say, I, I think you have a viable proposal that you can submit, but of course, we're government, I can't make a call all by myself, it takes a complete board here, and we have to follow a lot of guidelines and rules, and I think I shared that with all of you, so I just want to just thank you that I'm, I'm passionate about this, I know I tried to set up a meeting with Lane County, we weren't able to do that, I did talk to Commissioner Lichen from Lane County on Tuesday, so we're, I'm going to try to get down there, I'd like to get an opportunity to set up an opportunity, for all of us to get down there and see Commissioner Farr's led, Commissioner Farr-led proposal there in Lane County, from what I understand, when you shared with me, and you've shared with me in the past, this is not the first time we heard of it, nor was it in June, you came to one of our town halls and shared that, so I've heard of the same model, and even when I talked to the administrator, he shared of a similar model up in Olympia, as I believe. So, I think you've got a great concept, and you've got an organization where you're helping our veterans today, and I, I want to thank you all for, for doing that, and I'm going to try my best to examine all of that and, and help my, my folks here, my colleagues at the commission, and hopefully I'll have their support for trying to set up some guidelines for a, for a similar model that we all agree on can work with guidelines, and, and, but I think there was some confusion amongst the board here, that somehow there was a commitment made between myself or myself and Commissioner Schrader to you all, and, and I, I know that's not the case, but we were trying to do what we could, and it takes votes to get it done, and I hope you're competitive, but if someone else comes along with a competitive bid, it's the cause, I think, that's important to us, that we, we meet the cause, and so I'm, I'm passionate about helping that. I do want to say, you did share one thing with us that one Friday, I think is important to know, is that, and maybe you can expand on it, I'd like to hear it from your, from your, your words, but you're mentioning that if there's a veteran in transition housing, they can't, they're not eligible for another step, right? And that if they're actually in a shelter, and they're attainable, and they're reachable when they get the call, that that, that you are, you have found a means of overcoming that hurdle or that barrier, could you expand on that?
Yes, well, because of my time at the county, and because I work with the Rapperty Housing and the SSVF people, the biggest problem we have right now is, as the homeless veterans outreach, I would go out and find the veteran, I would talk to him, I'd bring him in, have him fill out some paperwork, well, then that veteran goes back to their car, and they go park at Walmart, and then the SSVF person calls me two days later, I need to get ahold of, say, veteran, oh, well, I got to go find him, his phone's been shut off, something's gone wrong, we can't find him, the problem is, because we don't have a shelter here, or someplace where we can keep these veterans, where we can actually have our hands on them and do a wraparound kind of services, where we can keep them in one spot, it's very difficult. Unfortunately, it takes probably four to five months right now, one from the day I meet a veteran on the street, to the day that he gets his HUD-VASH or his SSVF assistance, it can take anywhere from two to five months. I brought some people here that it did actually take that long, that were living in their cars, and I know that everybody talks about, we should be able to go get a job, and let's get them going, and I could have, if I would have had them in some kind of a shelter or tiny home, I could have helped them start looking for work and get those things going at the same time, so that's, that's the big piece, is just being able to reach out and touch the veterans in one location.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard.
One quick follow-up, Tudy, if I could, and I'm, I'm done with my questions, and that is, I just wanted to share for folks in the audience and folks that are watching the video, that the Budget Committee did vote, and we did pass, at least initially, it's got to be finally approved by the board, some seed money for a non, not, well, actually nonprofit, but an organization perhaps, to build some housing, or, or seed money for a property, whatever it may be, to make something like this happen.
Yes, sir.
So, we've made one step, and we have several to go, and hopefully we can expedite this. But, again, I need my, I need my cooperation from staff, they need to be able to put this all together, so I hope we can do that in a reasonable amount of time.
No, and the one thing I will say, Commissioner, is thank you very much, but I do believe that a nonprofit can do it a lot faster, unfortunately, we know that things take time, and I know that everybody wants to make this happen, we are looking at saving lives, and we want to have these veterans in by November.
We have a couple commissioners in the queue, and then I'm going to have Don Krupp address this issue.
Okay.
Commissioner Bernard.
Is there a septic system on this property?
Yes.
And there's water?
Yes.
Okay, and so, I didn't know that, that, and my other question is, would it have to go through a planning commission process? And I don't know if you can answer that, you don't have to, but...
So, I have not, I, I'm aware that the planning director's been in discussions about this issue, but I don't have all the background, I will tell you that the, a campground under the FU10 zone is conditional use, so there would need to be a public hearing for that as the code's written currently. There is some question, as I understand it, though, about whether tiny homes, how they fit within this campground concept, and some discussion at the state level about whether they're RVs, or whether they're homes, and so I guess I'm wondering if we might need a code amendment, which can happen, but that would be something we should know sooner rather than later.
Is this Clackamas County property? I thought it was in Oregon City's urban growth boundary.
Yeah, it, it is, if it's FU10, it's ours now, but the expectation for it is that it would go into the city of Oregon City and be rezoned at that time.
So would the, well, I'm not going to get in the weeds on this, because I don't know what's going on.
And then, the flood zone issue is, is a problem, sure, they might float, but you wouldn't want them floating down the river, you'd probably want to anchor them, so that if they did float...
No, but there are options, is all, sir, as I did address it, and they are being built on floodplains, because it is cheaper, and that's why...
The other thing is, is in definition, camping is only a certain length of time, I, it's under 30 days, or something like that, and so, you know, there'd be some restrictions on that, but, I mean, all this stuff, we're certainly interested in looking into and seeing if there's a, if there's a possibility, but, you know, we had an organization up in Zig Zag that worked for years, trying to raise money, we sat that money in a matching fund, and they were never able to achieve it. I don't remember how much that was, it was a few million to do that project, but they never did achieve it, and it is sad, and, and, yeah, nonprofits can probably do it faster, but we're responsible for the tax dollars, so we have to be careful.
We, we have no problem with that too, sir, because if you look at the nonprofits that we're partnering with, truthfully, the budgets of those 10 nonprofits, and they actually have about 35 solid years, and these are some very, very strong, solid nonprofits that we're partnering with, they have quite a bit of money in their funding.
Commissioner... If I, if I could make a comment to Jim, Jim Paul Edgar, retire, I'm a military veteran myself, but I'm not, I didn't retire from it, I went into business, and I pride, I try to bring a business common sense and an ROI mindset to any and all decisions that I get involved into. And on the property, on the floodplain, you know that there's a thing called an ordinary high-water mark, this property, like the cove right now, had 10 feet of water over the top of the Clackamas Cove, and yet they're building hundreds of condos on it in the process of doing it. This is right here in Oregon City, and it's in a floodplain, same floodplain, but the ordinary high-water mark delineates a, another line, and this property is well below the ordinary high-water mark, and, or ODOT would have the road shut down, because this is Highway 99. But I would turn around and also just tell you, the, one of the reasons why I'm involved is because I want to save lives, the clock ticks, every minute, every 42 minutes, another vet commits suicide. And if we don't, we can do better, and that's the key element that we're all trying to do, and I know that Don and, and all of you here understand the, how important it is that we move ahead, we expedite this, that's the reason why you got the highest point value of all of the program funds that were budgeted, and I want to really, again, thank everyone for making that happen. But if we can't find this property, I went ahead, and a business guy going through the contingency lists, I went over and talked to Terry Emmerich, and said, okay, Terry, you have property, and Chuck Rollins, Robbins asked me, he said, that might be a good thing to do, so I asked him, and he says, yeah, I'll work with the county, and if the county has some property, we can do some trading, I'll do it, and this is for veterans. And so, yeah, if you, that's one of the reasons why we need to sit down with the planning department right away and get some clarification, and get some of this worked out, so we can really understand what it is. But we truly want to have a shelter built by this November, and we'd like to have this type of, have people here, and when we're doing it on post and beam, we can do this affordably, we can do it fast, Better Bill Barnes can come in with their shelters, and they could have one up in two weeks. So, it's not like the, a big deal to, to try to say that we can't build it, and when Home Depot says, we'll come in and supply all of the insulation, wiring, and a lot of things like that, free, we got all the trade unions that want to come in and help. So, all we need is for you guys to be working with us as good partners, good partners, and bringing in social services at all of the people, this intervention process that we're going to have to go through with each of these veterans that we come in and try to put a roof over their heads, we don't want them to die under our roof. We, we need a lot of help, and the help is going to have to come directly from all of the resources of Clackamas County, to make sure that we're doing what is right, what is best for our military veterans, and we're committed to do that, and we want you to be committed to do that too, with us, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edgar. Commissioner Schrader?
So, I just want to let folks know, we have been looking at this, because I work with Commissioner Farr on the Association of Oregon Counties, and he is on a housing subcommittee, and one of the things we have planned to do is to go down and look at their model down in Lane County, and I think that this is really a good start, I think that the one-stop idea works in many different models, but the next step is going to have to be, how do we put it into the context of our other housing agendas that we're already working on in this county, and I suspect that Mr. Krupp could talk a little bit about what those other pieces are, for example, one of the things are, I don't know if you're aware that our human services folks are actually interviewing people along the trail, what's the name of the trail?
Spring...
Springwater.
The Springwater Trail. And so, they're interviewing them because they wanna find out who they are, where they are. It's turning out some of the preliminary data, when I talked to our Human Services Director, shows that a lot of those people actually had already lived in that community. And the reason they're staying along that area on the trails is because they kinda know the community. So, as we gather that information, it's going to help inform and guide any other initiative that we put forward. The other thing we've been working on, and jump in any time, Mr. Krupp, but we are assessing our properties that we own throughout Clackamas County, 'cause they are really underutilized, some of them, we believe. And so, what we're trying to do is to, is to assess and see what we have, what could be sold, if maybe, we don't know that yet. But, we're trying to get a four-to-one housing exchange, return on that. So, I want, I want folks to know we have been doing it, but I think, I think that I sense your frustration and it's not, it's not, it's not as quick as, as we would like, but we have been, we have been working on it in those particular contexts. And one of the reasons I wanted to meet with Commissioner Farr, and we are all, and whether we do it individually or whether we just go down in a big group, one of the things that Pat told me, Pat Farr, was, again, getting the other capacity from the community, that buy-in is critical. And you have, really, appears as if you've really kind of gotten that. But, we also wanna make sure we get our Human Services folks, we gotta get their buy-in too. That's, that's the big thing. Because I'll be honest with you, as Commissioners, we can say anything, but we've gotta make sure that we have our county folks who are also working on these issues are kind of on board with it. So, that's, that's gonna be another step, so.
Mr. Krupp, would you like to make a comment for us?
Well, thank you. So, next week, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to sit down with Ms. Kennedy and Mr. Edgar with Commissioner Schrader, and I, there may be at least one other Commissioner who might join us, I don't know for sure, but the, to learn a little bit more about the concept and your organization. And we're also scheduling some time next week at our Administrative Administrator's Issues Session on Tuesday to talk about how we put in place what would be a decision-making process and what next steps might look like in order to move forward with what will be a budgeted item for addressing homeless veterans in Clackamas County. And I, in anticipation of the discussion next week, I will be interested in learning a little bit more about the Planning and Zoning-related issues that Mr. McAllister's been involved in. I know, I know that Mr. McAllister is on vacation this coming week, so I'll, I'll be looking for Jennifer to help me out a little bit more about the specific details of that. It would not surprise me, though, given the, how contemporary tiny home projects are, that there may need to be something done with the county code in order to properly make a home for tiny houses in Clackamas County. I've been through this experience in other locations. I'm probably one of the few people in Clackamas County who's actually been from start to finish a tiny house project. And in that experience as well, we, we needed to amend the zoning codes in order to be able to accommodate that and deal with the permitting processes, and also to deal with the kind of interests on the part of people in the community for what, what that means to have a project of that type in their neighborhood and in their area. But, I'm very much interested in exploring this further. I'm also very interested in finding out what we can learn from Lane County. And I, I know that a number of Commissioners will probably join us on a trip south for that. This is a very complex subject. And I think what we're going to learn is, is that a tiny house project will play a part of a role of what is a larger, more difficult challenge, given the scale and numbers of individuals that we're talking about that really need help and assistance.
And if I could just do a follow-up with one of the reasons why, I know it's frustrating when things move slowly, but remember, if you're using public dollars, it's, we, we have to be hyper accountable with that. That's the, that's the rub. Is there any, have you guys got, well, Terry Emmerich just give you the money to buy the land, can you get to do that?
Don't worry, if I, if it comes down to, I'm not afraid to ask.
Well, I think, that's what would move things along more. Well, then, of course, we have to do codes, but what I'm trying to say is that we, when we, when we allocate money, we have to make sure every T is crossed, every I is dotted. And we don't, sometimes we can't be as nimble and flexible, and that's the frustration, I think, that I feel from people. And then, plus, putting it in the larger context of what, what our folks have already been doing is part of the issue too, because we gotta make sure, we gotta get that four-to-one housing done, along with your, any kind of project we may do with you or other folks on tiny houses, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bernard.
And then, there would have to be some sort of facility for showers and restrooms.
Yep.
The other question is, you mentioned something about it being in Oregon City's UGB. That means that Oregon City would have to annex it, which you could request annexation.
I, I have already broached that issue with the city of Oregon City, with the mayor and the planning people there. And they have always said, it's been in the UGB since nineteen-eighty. And the reason why it's never been annexed is because of the cost of bringing in water and sewer into the area. And they have no desire whatsoever. And when we've broached the subject about doing this, they said, kind of, "It's the county's issue." Kind of like, they, they, they don't wanna have anything to do with this property because they can't afford it.
Thank you. Mr. Savas.
My last comment, I just hope we can maybe challenge ourselves here at the county to be a little bit more nimble and do what we can. But, I really wanna see what we can do. And if that means we try to help, help you find private funding, we help you find private funding. But, I still think there's a role for the county, whether it's zoning and obviously the other services that we need from, from our Health and Human Services Department that are still a necessary component of this.
Yes, sir.
And I also wanna point out that the, the part that, the gap that you're gonna fill is just part of the long chain of actually trying to find permanent housing for veterans.
Exactly.
So, that's another, a whole nother element of this that's not even being discussed. And we have VASH voucher programs, we have other things out there. But, I appreciate that you identified that one important step to get 'em out of the elements and into some care and attention and nurturing that they need, so.
Well, we have some great programs in the county and they are working. I just think they could work a lot faster. This one little piece could make them, and we could get these other programs working, 'cause there's already programs out there, it's just trying to get them to more efficient. That's what we do.
Just in closing, Tina, I've tried to listen to your testimony carefully, and I really try to listen to everybody, what they say carefully, 'cause I'm one of the Commissioners that say, "Well, words mean something." And you made the statement that we don't provide housing to homeless veterans. Well, we actually, ma'am, we actually do in the form of VASH vouchers. And something that Commissioner Schrader and I do, we've gone back to Washington, DC and successfully lobbied to increase more VASH vouchers to Clackamas County because they were all going to Multnomah County. And so, I think that, just when you, I know you're quite exuberant, just be careful what you say, what the county does and doesn't. And, and I know a lot of people are frustrated with the treatment of veterans, and I, and I would agree. However, we must work within the Veterans Administration to get those valuable benefits for our veterans.
Yes, ma'am.
The valuable medical care, the valuable, as Mr. McAdam said, mortgage loans for them. So, it's not just the county that needs to be more nimble. I would submit it to the federal government, where we all seek to have these monies for veterans. So, we're going to look through this and study, and I'm gonna be very careful not to make promises that I can't keep tonight, because I think there's been a lot of assumptions made in the testimony tonight from you and Mr. Edgar. I just wanna warn and proceed with caution on this. I don't remember any promises being said in the Budget Committee from all ten members. I think we're gonna look at it. So, that's how we need to proceed on this. And frankly, I don't know where the three hundred thousand dollars is gonna come from, because we had a flat budget this year. And I'm also a budget person, so I just, again, we need to proceed with caution. We did not have an extra three hundred thousand dollars in this year's flat budget to do that. So, I guess I need to ask, where's it gonna come from and who's going to go without? What special, I'm not, we're done. But, just keep in mind, be careful what you ask for, because a lot of times it has an undesired effect on something else. But, thank you. Now, I have two more cards. Mr. Les Poole and Mr. Charles Ormsby.
Where's it, Charles Lee? I'll be brief. I'll start by saying, it's nice to have evening meetings. It's nice to have citizens come in and, and try and make something happen. And that's what I've always tried to do. And I appreciate the time that was just spent with those folks. We can't do enough for the vets. I wanna clarify something, I, that there was an exchange earlier. And Mrs. Swanson, formerly Cronberg, when she spoke, the reason she's here tonight is that, that she called me on the phone, she, she was offended by what was said. I don't wanna make it very clear that the property that she donated for a park named in honor of her husband, who was a vet, Robert Cronberg, in Milwaukee, was subject of an effort to locate the end of the light rail line and the parking garage and the other undesirable things. And some of the things that we heard recently from Mr. Bernard are completely inaccurate. And I wanna make it very clear that anyone could go back and look. April, during the last several weeks, and on more than one occasion, Commissioner Bernard has claimed that this citizen's donation to the community was seized for back taxes and it was a dump. And it was neither. And this property was donated by her in nineteen-ninety-one. And there we were in two thousand and five, we still hadn't done much with it. And here she is tonight, still wondering when the park's going to happen and why the record is being distorted about that property and her contribution to the public. I wanna make it very, very clear again. Mr. Bernard claimed that that property was a dump seized for back taxes, and it most definitely was not. Thank you again.
Mr. Charles Ormsby, thank you for being so patient.
Good evening. My name is Charles Ormsby. I go by the nickname Skip. I'm co-chair. I live with my mothers and on the side of the room here in Clackamas County at one-seven-zero Southwest Birds Hill Road, Portland, Oregon, nine-seven-two-one-nine-eight-five-zero-two. I'm here again tonight for a second round on the Twiliger Boulevard Sewer Project. I have about five main points. I'll quickly run through them. After my email communication of yesterday, June fifteenth, Wednesday, twenty-sixteen, I think it's time for a site tour, both of Clackamas County with about eight other government entities, including but not limited to Lake Oswego, City of Portland, ODOT, Multnomah County. So, everybody has eye, a common set of eyeballs on this issue of, of the Twiliger Boulevard Sewer Project. There needs to be time for citizen involvement on this. I don't know what, I've never seen a project scheduled in about three to four years of this process. So, that needs to be done, both a Perchart Critical Path and a Gantt Chart, which is a waterfall cascade. I understand you're going on Commission, on board vacation circa August, I understand, so is the majority of the other government entities. I still hear that the plan is to go forward circa twenty-sixteen October. Good luck. Just a note on that, there's another road closure that'll be affecting Twiliger Boulevard in the last two weeks of August that I found by just clicking around on the internet. And that is the, it's a ODOT Project, McAdam Ramp Rehabilitation Project, essentially from the Gibbs Street where the OHSU crosses over, underneath the Ross Island Bridge, above the I-5 and connects up to Kelly Avenue. They are proposing road closure, traffic diversion start at Twiliger Boulevard in Lake Oswego, then use Barbara Boulevard to get to downtown Portland. I have no idea what the traffic impacts are gonna be on us. As a consequence, I'm after a bunch of right-of-way documents on Highway forty-three. I want the STA documents, how they were enabled, where they came from, everything else. I want every document that's been conceived of for the Twiliger Boulevard Sewer Project. There's some things that are needed in the IGA. I'm still thinking about it, but I have not seen the IGA yet. I mentioned those two items. Basically, there's another project that is gonna be impacting northern access to Lake Oswego from southwest Portland, and that is the Boone's Ferry Culvert Daylighting Project. I would refer to the collective of Twiliger Boulevard and Boone's Ferry as Carmageddon Part Deux. Somebody at Lake Oswego called Carmageddon when they proposed to do this back in twenty-thirteen with closing everything off. But, when those two roads get closed down with a, again, without coordination of project plans, you're gonna have problems getting from southwest Portland to Lake Oswego in all aspects. I think that's about it.
Commissioners, any comments? Thank you, Mr. Ormsby, for coming tonight.
Good evening.
I don't see any more blue cards. I assume that everybody has turned one in who wishes to talk tonight. Great. Well, we'll continue with the business portion of our meeting. Mr. Krupp.
Okay, so we do have a public hearing this evening. It's to consider a resolution that would approve a supplemental budget item greater than ten percent for the Clackamas County budget for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. Diane Padilla from our Finance Department is here to give you a report.
Diane, I can't hear you very well.
Okay.
There we go.
My mic's on, that'll help.
Okay.
Diane Padilla, County Budget Manager. I'm here to request approval of a supplemental budget of greater than ten percent in the self-insurance fund. Specifically, the request is to move three million dollars that's currently in contingency in that fund into materials and services to make it payable for claims expenses that may become due by the end of this fiscal year. Fifteen-sixteen, that's now drawing to a close, was the first full year that the county has self-insured for medical benefits. And we just underestimated the volume of business that we would do, I guess, and so the budget was set too low. The department has recognized this and disclosed it previously. I'm just here to make it, ask for a budget change for the end of the year. They've already projected these costs into their year-end projection and budgeted their sixteen-seventeen budget that went before the Budget Committee recently. With this in mind, this is just an administrative change for this year.
Thank you. Do the Commissioners have any qualifying questions? Commissioner Savas.
I do. So, Diane, the contingency would come out of our general fund contingency or come out of a separate contingency in the insurance fund?
It's contingency that's in the self-insurance fund.
Okay, okay. Not, so the, this action alone, this will leave our general fund reserve and our general fund contingency alone?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, no further questions. I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. I don't see anyone. So, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move. We approve the resolution for Clackamas County Supplemental Budget Greater Than Ten Percent and Budget Reduction for Fiscal Year Twenty-Fifteen, Twenty-Sixteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? The motion has been made by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Savas. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Okay. Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. The motion is approved. Now, we have a public discussion item. Mr. Krupp.
Yes, Madam Chair. So, I'm going to invite Laurel Butman up to join Mr. Chris Story up at the dais. And this is a public discussion item to consider a resolution that would certify the election results that authorized general obligation bonds to replace the obsolete emergency radio communications system. So, Laurel?
Yes, thank you. And good evening, Commissioners. My name's Laurel Butman, Deputy County Administrator. And our action here tonight that you'll be taking, we hope that you'll be taking, that we're recommending, is going to take us, certifying the vote that was a positive vote to go out for these, to issue these general obligation bonds for this project... to go out for these, to issue these general obligation bonds for this project on behalf of the C-800 Radio Group. And it will start a motion, the actions that staff needs to take to actually issue those bonds. So just as a way of background, a little background on this, on May 17th, 2016, the voters of Clackamas County approved the issuance of these general obligation bonds for this project in the amount of approximately $59 million. The process of certification is reflected in the resolution that was in your packet. Oh, and I need to make one statement about the packets. We had a last-minute change in the exhibits, and it came in just like today. So I need, for public notice purposes, to state that the packet has been amended online, and the ones that you have in front of you are also corrected. So. Oh, yes, available to the public online. And we have copy also in our offices if anybody wants to see it. So the process of certification is reflected in the resolution that you'll be adopting. It's a ministerial act that ratifies and begins implementing voter approval. After certification, we will work with C-800 and contracted professionals on the issuance of the bonds and distribution of the proceeds. So you will be, continue to be involved in this project for a bit of time. And Chris Story is going to go over some of the things that you're going, you should expect to be coming in front of you. At this point, staff is respectfully recommending that the board certify the election results and preliminarily authorize the bond issuance. Chris, would you like to talk about the process?
Sure. Good evening, commissioners. This is the first of several steps where you will be walking down a path towards the issuance of these bonds. This step is just certifies the results of the election. We acknowledge the will of the voters has been expressed, and that we will follow that direction. The next steps are, we are working with our outside financial agents and bond counsel to develop a resolution that we'll be bringing back to you in late July, early August, where you will direct the issuance and sale of it. We're looking at a competitive sale to try and get, of course, the best rates possible for the taxpayers of Clackamas County. We'll be developing a preliminary offering statement, which is a securities document, because these bonds will be sold into public municipal bond markets. So we will be registering them with the SEC and marketing them into the public markets. That disclosure will be crossing your desk, and we hope you give it a careful read, because speaking of criminal liability, that is one area where you could get criminal liability if we materially misstate or omit to state facts in our disclosures to potential bond purchasers. So we will do our very best to make sure that it is absolutely correct. And then we are looking at a sale of the bonds in September, where we will be then bringing in the revenue. And as part of that process, we will be developing an agreement work between Clackamas County and the C-800 group that arranges for the distribution of those funds and Clackamas County's oversight to ensure that those funds are spread consistent with the direction of the voters.
I noticed here on the official ballot, I think this 800 megahertz radio passed in every single precinct. Is that right?
I didn't look at it that closely, I'm sorry.
I'm just scanning it, and it appears to be even in some of the precincts where they don't like to spend money, it passed. So I find that very interesting. Commissioner Bernard?
Well, the chart doesn't actually tell us the percentage of votes in favor.
I calculated that.
Okay, because it says percentage of turnout, which is, don't tell me anything. It was, what was the percentage in favor?
Seventy-one percent.
Great.
Seventy-one percent.
Yes.
Do commissioners, oh, Mr. Savas.
Yeah, I want to just clarify one thing. Laurel, could you identify for the record the change that was made? You mentioned early on that there was a small amendment that was made today, and it was entered our board packet. Could you specify or elaborate on what that change was?
Perhaps I can. So I had gotten a call earlier today from the county clerk regarding a discrepancy in the materials that were part of the original exhibits. I have sent you a copy of an email communication explaining the source of that discrepancy, which had to do with the discovery of additional ballots that needed to be counted and included in the final certifications, which was done by noon today. So I've also sent you a copy of a news release that also just went out this evening as well, explaining the circumstances underlying that. So we, in order, in deference to make sure you had the right materials and to make sure that we properly announced them, we switched the materials out. We made the announcement here for your meeting.
I've been on the road today to and from Hood River and testifying today. So haven't had any, I'm so far behind, I haven't even seen my email today, really. So I haven't caught up with that. I do want to say one thing on this matter, and that is, you know, I learned, I assumed that C-800 was, in this bonding initially, when it was proposed to us many, many months ago, that it was something that we were just helping along, similar to the Rose Villa project, where we were just authorizing that, and we didn't have any responsibility. I since learned, and staff has informed me, that actually we, the county commission is responsible for those $59 million. So being that I don't even know who is on this board, okay, I think it's incumbent upon at least one of us, and I'm happy to be that person, even if I do it voluntarily, to better educate myself and attend some of these meetings, because I think having some commissioner oversight to something that we're responsible for, I think is one of our responsibilities. And this is a sizable amount of money. And I'm not even for certain who's on this board. So as I understand, it's not necessarily an elected board. It's a board of some of our highly respected public safety officials that are primarily either appointed or. That's correct. Yeah, appointed their positions of their particular public safety organization. So I do know that they're in high regard, and I know they've been before us before. But I do think it's just a fundamental responsibility we have to be, to provide some oversight and be able to speak to this when we're approached.
Okay, any other questions of the presenters? This is a discussion item, and is there anybody from the audience that would like to come forward and speak on this? No? No? Okay, good. I'll ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the resolution certifying the election results, authorizing general obligation bonds to replace obsolete emergency radio communications.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Savas and seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion?
I just want to say that it's amazing that 341 ballots were discovered this late in the game. And it doesn't say in this email where they were discovered or by whom, but that the Secretary of State was consulted with, and that the count of the ballots didn't change anything. But it's interesting that 341 ballots just were discovered somewhere.
I'll make a comment on that. This is very similar to me and what happened in a governor's election a few terms ago when Dudley was running against, gee, what was that governor's name?
Kitzhopper.
Yeah, Kitzhopper. They discovered 22,000 ballots. Amazing, and it did change the course of the election. So I think we're doing pretty darn good if we only discovered 300 ballots.
I haven't heard that one.
Oh, yeah, you did. Oh, yeah, you did. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. The motion has passed. Thank you. Consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, a resolution directing the disposition of Clackamas County Development Agency surplus property at public oral auction and acceptance of Clackamas County Development Agency surplus property. Under our finance department, a resolution approving Clackamas County for budgeting of new specific purpose revenue for fiscal year 2015, 2016; a resolution approving the Clackamas County Supplemental Budget, less than 10% for fiscal year 2015, 2016; and a resolution approving Clackamas County for the transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2015, 2016. Under elected officials' approval of previous business meeting minutes, under the Department of Communications, C-Com, approval of an amended intergovernmental agreement with Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency, the City of Lake Oswego 911, and Columbia 911 Communications District. Under county council, approval of the designation of newspaper for the 2016 property tax foreclosed publication, and approval of a lease amendment number two between Clackamas County and OSU Extension in Clackamas County. Under Business and Community Services, approval of a modification of the grant agreement with the USDA Forest Service, Mount Hood National Forest, for the Dump Stopper, Stoppers Program. And under our development agency, a resolution authorizing the disposition of Clackamas County Development Agency surplus property; a resolution authorizing the disposition of Clackamas County Development Agency surplus property at oral auction; and approval of a contract with more excavation for the Otte Street Realignment Project. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mary. Do the commissioners wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval, and it has been seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. The ayes have it, and the motion has been passed. Well, we finished all of our work tonight, and I want to thank everybody who's coming. But now we have something really exciting, and that would be the administrators update.
Boy, have I got exciting news for you. As always, I do have good news to share with you. So first, this past Thursday, our Clackamas County Sheriff's Office did their sort of annual barbecue lunch at the Brooks Building to raise funds for the Sheriff's Office Military Employee Support Program. And the lunch raised over $600, which will provide additional support for our employees and their families when they are on military deployment. And this is a great help to families when their loved ones are away. My thanks to Sheriff Roberts and his team for doing this for our employees, and thanks to all those who serve. The other item I have is that our Water Environment Services Department is now one of only 10 nationwide applicants who were selected to participate in what is an innovative partnership that is intended to enhance stream health while at the same time reducing flood risks. This is a pilot program, and it will enable our Water Environment Services Department to retrofit three existing stormwater ponds within the service district number one. And these ponds do routinely overflow. So this retrofit will resolve and repair that so that we can avoid localized flooding associated with that, and for just a fraction of the cost of building new stormwater facilities. So congratulations to our West staff for getting to be a part of that program.
Mr. Krupp, would you send that to Oregon City?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Sure. Then the other thing, you know, we got a delightful note just this morning. It's from a Ruben Landeros, who is a student with the Holy Trinity Catholic School, a young elementary school student. And it's, his note to us says, "Dear sir or madam, enclosed you will find a copy of my report. I wrote about Clackamas County. I learned a lot about this part of our state. Someday, I hope my family and I can visit there and see all of the sites." So we're going to put him right in contact with our tourism department to get him lined up.
Where's he from?
This is from Ruben Landeros. And Ruben is a student with the Holy Trinity Catholic School. Do we know what grade?
Oh, Beaverton.
Yeah, in Beaverton.
He's never been here.
Yeah, never been here. So we'd be happy to invite Ruben here. And he provided a copy of his report about Clackamas County, very thoroughly researched. And in conclusion, he says, "Clackamas County is an important part of the state of Oregon. There are definitely products and businesses here that are useful to people of the state and around the globe."
Nice.
That's my report.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to Commissioner Communication. And Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Great. Well, Commissioner Bernard and I were at the Association of Oregon County Spring Conference, where we talked about emergency response capacities, a number of issues, including earthquakes, floods, and unfortunately now the notion of mass shootings and how we would respond to that kind of a tragedy here in this county, which I hope we won't have an issue like that anytime soon. We did hear from Judge Grasky of Harney County, where they talked with the FBI, when they talked about how they managed the occupation of the wildlife refuge down there. And that was extremely interesting to see the strategies that were employed and how difficult it was for our fellow commissioners down there to get through that kind of traumatic process. But I thought it was a really good conference where we came home with lots of different ways to cope with emergencies and disasters. We had a town hall in Malala last night, and that was with Commissioner Smith and I and Commissioner Savas. And it was pretty lively, as usual, but it's Clackamas County for you. It's always, never a dull day in Clackamas County. I also attended the Library District Advisory Committee meeting this past week, which is the body that advises the Board of County Commissioners concerning the library district. And I think that they've met about three times now, and hopefully they will be giving us good advice about how we move forward with our successful library district. And this morning, I spent some time with the Public Utility Commission folks. We just had our last meeting, where we are going to publish findings to bring to the legislature of how to get natural gas out to rural communities. And again, another lively discussion between PGE, the natural gas folks, the propane folks. And then you had, you know, some commissioners and state representative, actually, Bill Kenner was also a part of that working group. So stay tuned for that. They'll publish the draft findings in the next few weeks. And then hopefully, we will have the findings formalized and ready for the legislature by the first week, week in July. And so now my summer reading is actually how people designate and how we manage rate hikes in utilities. I actually downloaded a book on my Kindle, which just shows you that I don't really have a life at this point, reading about utility rates for my summer reading. Okay, finally, arts and culture activities in the county? If we can pull that up, Mary? Thank you. Okay, Canby Public Library, Music in the Stacks, Castle Town Duo, blending the energy of traditional Irish reels with modern folk, blues, jazz, and country influences. Robert Richter on guitar and vocals, and Katie Lubin's on the fiddle. Saturday, June 18th, 2:30 PM at the Canby Public Library. Rationing the War, World War II on the home front and abroad. This exhibit tells the story of domestic survival at home, as well as the efforts to halt the aggressiveness of the enemy. Through artifacts, music, and radio broadcast, what happened over 70 years ago reemerges with a better understanding of why history defines those who underwent this four-year period as being the greatest generation. Sunday, June 19th, noon to 5:00, at the Oregon Country Settlement in the Village of Roda Denden. For more information about any event, go to the Arts Alliance website, clackamasartsalliance.org. This also reminds me that I did, I was down in Salem with the folks from the bomber. They had a dinner there where they were fundraising to restore the Lacy Lady. And as many of you come from the area remember, the Lacy Lady was in front of the bomber, but now they are actually restoring it to get it back into flight condition. I hope one day I get to fly on it. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Martha. Commissioner Savas, you're up next.
Yeah, I've spent the last two weeks in a lot of transportation meetings, and today was no different, and this week was really no different. I am pleased to say that through the Connect Oregon process, that it looks like, pending final Oregon Transportation Commission approval, Clackamas County may be the recipient of three Connect Oregon projects. So that's huge, because two years ago, we got zero projects out of that. And so I think we, as a result of Tuesday, I think this region, Region One, which is Hood River County, Clackamas County, Multnomah County, and Washington County, was awarded almost $20 million, as I understand it. So we'll have the final numbers here pretty soon. But that's a huge, a huge success for the region. Was able to testify today on the Oregon Transportation Committee about our newly formed Area Commission on Transportation. We call it the ACT, the R1 ACT, Region One ACT. And represented our 31-member group there. And it's our hope that before the end of the year- there, and it's our hope that before the end of the year, we have an opportunity to report, give a final report on the one-year progress with the membership as to, is it meeting our goals, the hard work that our rural folks did. Representative Kenner and others helped make that happen. We need to provide an opportunity for everyone to opine on that and see if we can come up with a final charter. We're existing today on a provisional charter granted by the Oregon Transportation Commission, and it's our hope that we can finalize that this year, before the end of the year. So, that's what I have today, but I do want to say one thing. I had spoken to Mr. Langdon here a couple months ago, and he brought up the fact, and he mentioned it today, actually, he touched on the fact that Chair Ludlow had apologized, and as my understanding, he had apologized on behalf of the commission. And when I spoke to Mr. Langdon, I realized that he was actually expecting an apology for myself, so I apologized to him over the phone and promised him that whenever I had the opportunity, that I would publicly apologize for what you had gone through in that period of time, though it was not, you know, from myself or Chair Ludlow at the time. But I do, I know we had a very passionate discussion about that, and I truly apologize for what took place.
That's okay, Richard. We're going to go ahead and finish with this.
Apology accepted. Thank you.
Okay, is that it? Commissioner Bernard.
Okay, this week, I went to the retirement of Joy Thalman after 25 years residential services. I'm not sure what her position was, manager, I believe. She is, actually started the CSAP program, CSAP being a program to get people off, you know, addiction, and was retiring, and lots of people attended. Very proud that Clackamas County is again a leader in how we deal with folks in our justice system, along with the Transition Center. You know, the work we're doing is the leading edge. Also, like Commissioner Schrader, I went to Pendleton, and we looked at various disasters, fires, active shooters, tsunamis, earthquakes, flooding. I thought the presentation of the FBI was really good, and issues of flooding in the Tillamook Valley, appreciated the years of work that went behind that. We also got a tape, which I watched. It was an active shooter tape, it was, you know, something the FBI filmed just weeks before, umquah situation, the school shooting. It was almost the exact scenario that actually occurred there, and they kind of take you through the process of managing the situation. And I'd say one of the biggest changes over the last few years has been that they don't wait anymore. They get right in there and try to resolve it before it gets worse. That happened in Clackamas Town Center. That's what we did to resolve it, and actually, in Florida, that's what they did until they were trapped in the back room as hostages, and then went in, but you can't wait very long. One of the things that they told us was really important is make sure that you are ready to receive donations, whether it's cash or materials, but it's also, one of the things that they told us is that 60% of the material donations end up in the dump, because there's no use for them. It's used clothing, thousands of tubes of toothpaste, and things from all over the country. People really want to know what you need, so you really should develop a list of what your needs are. Of course, if it were an earthquake in this area, it would be a long time before the roads would open up, and you'd be able to transport this, so you need some storage opportunities. Other than that, thank you. Oh, excuse me.
Dog.
Hey, today's dog is Buddy. Buddy, he's ready to join you in life's adventure. He has two breeds in his heritage. His beagle nose leads him, and his pugnus gives him energy. He's a seven-year-old and is looking for a calm home and respectful older children and adults. He likes to go for walks, and he knows how to sit and take treats nicely. Speaking of nice, it would be nice if you'd stop by and visit him today. Stop by and visit Buddy at Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or visit him on the web at www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
You know, Jim, you have the best part every, to do the dogs, and I'm always envious of that, but you have shared. Thank you. You have shared. Well, this week, I attended my task, my State Task Force meeting on the reopening of the Lamont Falls locks. It was very good. We really are getting to the phase of our meetings where it's time to identify state agency who will take the lead on the project, and it's a very complicated project, although I think we're going to get to a fine resolution on this soon. And I just want to thank all the people who are working on this. They come from diverse backgrounds, and they're just really smart, and I'm always amazed at the contributions that they make, and I'm able to sit there and witness them. You know, Joy Thalman, I consider her one of our really stellar employees at Clackamas County. She is retiring, and her job alone, she was able to change the world as we know it. She took drug abuse people, a lot of them were youth, taught them how to be productive citizens and get off drugs, and gave many people a second chance, and my hand is off to her. She's going into retirement. I'm sure she will be busy doing something, and I think that's a wonderful, wonderful thing for her. This week, I was fortunate as vice chair to assume the chair duties, when Commissioner Ludlow was on vacation, and I want to thank my colleagues for tolerating me, not always knowing what to do, but I've had good scripts from staff. Thank you very much. And I will say, last night, we had our town hall meeting in Mulala, and my hometown. And the last time we were there, there was packed with friends and people asking questions and how we could help them. However, and I will say this, in the defense of this commission, of the Commissioners who did attend, it was really taken over by a group of people who was intent on shouting us down, refused to follow the rules that I tried to implement as chair. And you heard some criticism of me here tonight. I stand by my actions in trying to gain control of the meeting. All of us Commissioners were called names stupid, we didn't know what we were doing, and it was all in regard to the marijuana regulations that we implemented. And I will state again, we followed the law. When we were elected to this position, we agreed and we sworn on our oath to uphold the Constitution of the state of Oregon, and rather, and all of us did not like the passage of marijuana. All five of us spoke out against it. I still speak out against it. I still think it is not a good idea, but as an elected official, I have took an oath to follow the rule of the law and the letter of the law, and we will continue to do that. And I just want to say, it was a very, very sad event last night, and I am still somewhat emotionally moved by it, but that's what we do. We live for another day, so to speak, in politics, and that's all I have to say. If there is no further business, the meeting is adjourned.